Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 2nd Planning Commission meeting this evening. Please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And first of all, I'd like to tell everyone that if you'd like to make a public comment at the entryway, there are public comment cards. Fill them out and you can hand them to the staff and they'll hand them to us. And please be reminded you have two minutes for the public comment. Thank you very much. And may I have a roll call, please?
Edelman?
Here.
Das Magwal?
Here.
Proaño?
Here.
Satori?
Present.
D. Giovanni?
Present.
Okay, and it looks like tonight the minutes for receptive reforms are not available. So then we're just going to move into open our public hearing. And we'll be having a presentation of Mr. Powell. May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Powell, please. Thank you. For item number one is that's our major subdivision.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The first item for you this evening is the minor subdivision of 27 Warner Avenue.
I can't see.
There we go.
All right. Sorry about that. All right. The application proposes to subdivide the existing 6,000-square-foot lot into two 3,000-square-foot lots with the future intention of constructing a single-family home on each of the two lots. The existing home on the lot would be demolished. This... The subject property is located on the east side of Warner Avenue, south of Vale Street. The project is... Oh, this slide shows the proposed parcel map for the site. As you can see, it was one large 6,000-square-foot lot that's going to be divided in half. The project is exempt from CEQA in accordance with Section 15315 for minor land divisions. The general plan encourages the development of infill housing in existing neighborhoods on sites that are underutilized, where residential development represents the highest and best use, and where public infrastructure exists to support the intensity of the proposed development. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission forward the minor subdivision for 127 Warner Avenue to the City Council for approval. This completes staff's presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Oh, that's it? Okay. So first of all, I'd like to open the floor. And if the applicant could come up? Is there applicant here? And if the commissioners have any questions? Beginning with Commissioner Satori, please.
I do have a few questions. When we're talking about this home, it will be mirrored. Both homes will be the same. And how large? How many bedrooms? How many bathrooms?
My client does not have a full picture of what needs to be done first because I know Daly City has adopted the more strategic parking requirement. So it really depends on how much... How many parkings do you provide? I understand that if the house is more than 2,500 square foot, it's going to require six-car parking. So that is going to be a major factor for my client. So... But I have a feeling that they want to build a house under 2,500 square foot so that they do not have to provide so many parkings one side.
And so I guess my question would be, are we looking at the two... It's like a two-car garage. Is that considered parking? Two parking?
So, this is just a proposal to subdivide the land. The building of the houses would go through the normal plan check process. It wouldn't be subject to any design review because it's only two units. So there's no houses proposed at the time. They're only proposing subdividing the land.
Right. No, I'm just curious because I know that once you divide it and people plan to build, like I just saw one close by to Westlake Avenue, where they had one house and they tore it down, they built two. I saw exactly, and it's a normal Daly City two-story house. I was just curious on... I mean, obviously, you guys have plans that people have to follow, right?
Yeah.
Right? No, I'm just asking. I was just asking because a big problem... A big problem in Daly City is parking. And every time I bump into somebody, the first thing somebody says to me is, "There's so many cars and there's not enough parking." So that's why I was asking.
Right. So the city council probably a year and a half ago, two years, adopted new parking regulations. So the parking requirement is based on the size of the home. And that's why Mr. Tan referenced that if it's over 2,500 square feet, there'd be six parking spaces. But it's a tiered system, so less than 2,500 may only require four parking spaces. But yeah, the amount of parking is based on the square footage.
Okay. And I'm just curious, is that if it was under 2,500, and let's say it's four parking, do you consider the two in the garage and the two in the driveway as four?
Parking in the driveway does count towards the requirement.
And so two in the garage, two in the...
Correct.
Okay. Just like a normal... Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Edelman?
I do have a question. So there currently is a house on the lot. Is the house occupied?
Yes.
Is it occupied by the owner or is it rented?
It's rented out now.
Uh-huh. And so they're going to demolish the house, but there's no plans in place for building new houses when the lot is subdivided?
No. So, and I don't know what company going to be coming to view that. So, but the first step is to get the subdivision approved, and then they will consider whether, you know, they... When they're going to build it, or they're going to hold on it for a while before they build it.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner?
I have no questions.
You have no questions?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, welcome. And you can state your name for the record, so I apologize for that.
My name's Andy, and I am here to represent the owner of 127 Warner Avenue.
Yeah, thank you. I just have a couple of questions. I guess based on the Commissioner Pirano is that since there aren't any plans and this is the decision to subdivide it, we are concerned because once a subdivision is built, then people put like 10 bedrooms and five bathrooms and... Because currently that... They think that they can just slide because that's how the current thing is. Of course, that could change in the interim. We know that for how they do it. But if... Obviously, is there a plan for the... Is the renters going to be able to move back in?
Well, it's not required in Daly City to have the renter to move back into the same home that they have been living in, San Francisco. So that's how it is.
Okay.
So the tenant, I mean, the owner does not have to, you know, allow the tenant to move back to the home. Of course, that if they wanted to, they can always make the arrangement with the tenant.
Okay.
I do have a question. So, once you have the subdivision, it doesn't necessarily mean you could tear down the house right away. It's just you have permission to divide it. Are you...
Exactly.
Right?
Yes. Yeah. I mean, if they decided to, you know, if the economy doesn't go well, if they don't have the financial to support the building of the new homes, I mean, they can abandon the subdivision.
But you still have it divided.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly.
And the subdivision, my understanding, is going to have expiration day on it. So if no action is taken, then, you know, it can be abandoned.
Status quo. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Are there any public comments on this item?
I'm just curious.
Oh, sir, if you don't mind, just if you fill out a card in the back and just hand it to the staff here, they'll be happy. And we'll have you come up and then speak for two minutes. Does it... Should be a card in the holder?
Or you can just tell them to respond.
Yeah. So you might just come, and then we'll just fill it out as you come up. You don't only have to put your name. Yeah. You don't have to fill out the rest of it. That's fine. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Hi, I'm Alan Lynn. I'm just curious about gentleman, Mr. Tan just said about the subdivision expiration. How long is the expiration of the subdivision? If it's approved?
It's good for two years from the date the City Council approves it.
Okay. It's good for two years.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Take any motion?
And may I have a roll call, please?
Should close the public hearing?
Okay. All right. We have a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now I want to make a motion on the recommend that the Planning Commission forward to the City Council the following recommendation. And we do... Right, first? Number one?
Adopt the...
Yeah. To adopt it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed? None? Pardon me tonight because I... My glasses broke on the way here. Okay? And yes, it was a little difficult seeing. So maybe the vice chair could read this for me.
Okay.
That would be great. Thank you.
Recommend the City Council affirm the environmental assessment and recommend the City Council approve minor subdivision, SUB 7-18-13562, subject to conditions of approval outlined herein.
So moved.
Second, the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This one needs a roll call.
We need a roll call.
We need a roll call. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Just go ahead. Edelman?
Yes.
Das Magwal?
Yes.
Proaño?
Yes.
Satori?
Yes.
D. Giovanni?
Yes. Thank you. With that, I actually asked our vice chair here if you would mind doing the second part because I'm really having a hard time seeing it. Please, Vice Chair.
So, use permit UPR-06-18-13528 and design review DR-06-18-13528. duplex...
Go ahead.
Oh. Construct a three-story, two-unit residential duplex building at the southwest corner of Vista Grande Avenue and Miriam Street, 201 Grande Avenue. The project is category exempt from the CEQA Act per CEQA guidelines, 15303B, new construction of small structures. So, right.
All right. The second item for you is the use permit and design review for the Vista Grande duplex, which is located at 201 Vista Grande Avenue. The applicant is proposing to construct a new three-story duplex building on a vacant lot. The subject property is located at the southwest corner of Vista Grande Avenue and Miriam Avenue. A grocery store and residential unit which previously occupied the site were destroyed by fire and demolished in the early 2000s. The subject property is located at the southwest corner of Vista Grande Avenue and Miriam The site plan incorporates a front yard 20 feet in depth along Vista Grande, which includes a two-car-wide driveway. The driveway provides additional parking for Unit 1, which has five bedrooms, while Unit 2 has four. The remainder of the front yard area will be landscaped. A condition of approval has been added restricting additional paving. The rear yard has a depth of 23 feet. The ground floor plan is essentially a mirror image for each of the two units, with the exception being the garages. The first unit's two-car garage is oriented towards Vista Grande Avenue, and the second unit's two-car garage is oriented towards Miriam Avenue. A family room and bathroom are also located on the ground floor. A condition of approval has been added by staff to remove the tub and shower from the bathroom at this level in order to dissuade its use as an independent habitable unit. The second floor consists of a living room, kitchen, and two bedrooms for both Unit 1 and Unit 2. The third floor consists of an additional three bedrooms and roof deck for Unit 1 and two bedrooms for Unit 2. The front and rear elevations use split gable roofs, roof corbels, belly bands, and varying siding materials to break up massing and provide additional architectural interest. The same architectural elements carry over to the Miriam Avenue elevation. The project is exempt from CEQA in accordance with Section 15303B, new constructions of Staff finds that the proposed use is compatible with the general plan and zoning regulations of the single-family duplex residential district, and that the design is compatible and complementary to the existing neighborhood. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission forward use permit UP 61813528 and design review DR 61813530 to the City Council for approval. And this completes staff's presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Got it. May I?
Yes.
Okay. So first of all, in looking at the two units, the first one being at 2530 square feet, and it looks like you guys, instead of a 5-6, you're recommending a five-bedroom, five-bath with just a toilet and a sink near the family room, which is what I was reading. And then this second unit at 2220 at 4-4, so four bedroom, four bath. My concern is, when you look at a house that has equal bed and bath, to me, that's five people at least living in that unit. Five... Five... Could be five families. Could be five... It could be many, many cars. As well as this other unit, too, with same idea with the 2220, with four bedroom and four bath, as well as both having family rooms. And, you know, I'll be honest with you, that's a lot... That's a lot of bedrooms and a lot of bathrooms. And it doesn't look like a family home to me. You know what I'm saying? It just seems like, hi, let's make this big and put a ton of people in there, which people, to me, equate cars. And cars... It's just... There's just too many cars. And this, in my opinion, this invites many, many people to this space. And I think it's just over the top. That's my opinion. So, move on to the next person.
Commissioner? Satori?
I'll just reserve my question later.
Commissioner Edelman?
I echo Commissioner Proaño's statements about the density and the massive... I would just say that the amount of people who would likely live in a place like this, it does not look like a family structure to me. It looks like a dorm.
Yeah.
Or what do they call them? Hacker hotels?
Yes.
I mean, it'll be a nice one, though, because it's new.
Yeah. No. It does look nice. When I first looked at the design, it was like, wow, you know, this is really, you know, clever, the way that they put so many bedrooms and so many bathrooms.
Yes.
But it does not... It does not fit the rest of the neighborhood. The neighborhood already is plagued with parking problems, and to potentially put a situation which is going to increase the parking problem in the neighborhood, I don't think makes sense. I would recommend, just from what I know at this point, that the number of bedrooms and bathrooms be reduced in the unit.
Absolutely. And, you know, the other thing I'm looking at is, I mean, 23 feet, I mean, obviously, the bulk of the land open is going to be, obviously, for vehicles because the yard is not huge. It says 23 feet, so it's a small yard for, you know, of space. And then a driveway and, you know, it... To me, it's sounding... I mean, it already has a two-car garage for each unit coming from a different street, and then this driveway, to me, an extra driveway, sounds like, I need to put cars here. That's what it's sounding like to me.
So, the 23-foot rear yard is not a parking area?
No, no, no. I didn't say it was. Pardon me. I meant there's a driveway.
Correct.
There's two-car garages for each unit.
So there is a two-car garage for each unit, and there is a two-car-wide driveway for the larger of the two units. So theoretically, there could be four cars. Two cars in the garage, two in the driveway. On the Miriam Street side, there is no driveway.
No, no. I did see that.
So, and we are adding a condition of approval that the zoning code allows Daly City residents to expand their driveway up to 75% of the front yard area, but we're placing a condition on this project that says no additional paving other than the driveway, and that the remaining of... The remainder of the front yard and side yard needs to be landscaped.
And... May I? And what I see in Daly City is many people later getting rid of the grass, putting down pebbles or putting down cement and parking their cars there. I mean, it just happens. You could put all you want down in five or so many years down the road, is what we see. And I echo Ms. Howard's suggestion in that this is just large. It's large for Daly City.
Okay.
That's all. Sorry.
Commissioner?
I have no comment.
No comment?
Oh. Any other... Could we bring the Commissioner Satori?
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Satori. You know, there's so-called the fear of the unknown. People will always perceive that if it is a big house, a lot of people will stay. That's not true. It's a matter of facts and opinion. Your opinion is there might be a lot of cars. But actually, just like so many houses here Daly City I've seen, even in my house, we have four bedrooms, but we only two of us. We have four baths and then four bedrooms, but we're only two because all my children are gone. So the possibility is always not true. Could be right or wrong. Facts or figures? Facts or opinion? So my point here is, I even, to me, as a partner in progress and development is, we should encourage even high-building here because the so-called top-dollar land location, this is Daly City, which is just very near San Francisco. And we need houses more, four houses, housing, because we have a lot of old buildings here that needs to be replaced with a new one, something that people can really stay. So when somebody says a big building is coming up, a big house is coming up, there'll be a lot of people. No. Because, you know, parking and traffic is sometimes synonymous to progress also. The more you have economic activities, the more progress for the city. That is my point. But if you're going to think immediately that because of the fear of the unknown, if it's a big house, there'll be a lot of people, no. That's not true, based on my observation. If you go to some cities here, even in America, San Francisco is very, very congested, but did you see any havoc of traffic? I don't see, because traffic management can always be available. People can always avail of transportation from public or even pulling over cars. So I encourage really development to build a new house here. Even tall buildings, okay. For as long as... What do we care about those people who don't have parking? For as long as they manage themselves or see to it that they have to have a demeanor on parking or traffic. So to me, I will encourage more construction of, especially in the city wherein it's too small. You don't have any more space here. If it is just two floors, then you're depriving also other people of putting up a lot of rooms. So to me, I still want something like this or even more, because we are in the city, we lack housing. That is why in the future, probably, people will say, oh, we need affordable housing. But the point is, we are the one trying to reprogress development. We are trying to discourage people to construct more houses. So to me, if it is only parking or traffic, it is very, very negotiable. We can always find ways and means.
I'd like to open the... Thank you, Commissioner. I'd like to open the public hearing to ask if the applicant is here. Please come forward, sir, and state your name. Welcome. Thank you for being here. Then maybe the commissioners can have a motion to open the public hearing, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for being here. And what's your name, sir?
My name's Joseph, from Now Engineering, and I'm presenting the... Representing owners for this, like, new duplex house.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I'd like to ask the commissioners again. Commissioner Edelman?
Sure. Actually, I have a question in terms of... I know the neighborhood pretty well, and I don't believe there's much public transportation close to this property. Is that correct? Or do you know... Are there any transportation lines?
Actually, that's pretty close to the bus station. Like, it's a walking distance.
Okay.
Yeah.
How far?
I can answer that. I can answer.
One at a time, please.
Yeah.
Okay. So that was my concern is, I understand Commissioner Satori's comments about, you know, increasing amount of available housing in Daly City is important. However, I know that parking in that neighborhood is a problem currently.
Mm-hmm. But we actually have, like, the garage, like, two-car garage for the one unit and four car... And two-car garage and two outside parking for the other unit. So which is like four parking for one unit for five bedroom, I think is pretty appropriate for that unit. And also, that house being built at that location, actually pretty close to the bus station, and then the target went to the people as like more, like, working in the downtown area people. And then it's pretty convenient for them, like, to actually to commute from the bus station, yeah.
Can I... May I ask a question, Joseph?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair. Through the chair. And just a couple of things. Number one, you were mentioning that the target people would be people who work downtown. Are you talking family? Like, a family that would live there?
Yes.
Or does people... You do understand our concern. Do you live in the neighborhood? Do you live in Daly City?
Yes, I do.
So you do... You do understand...
I do.
People... How people are... All you have to do is witness people trying to scramble for parking and literally get in fights to understand that the concern of having a home, you know, that would have so many bedrooms and so many bathrooms, to me, it sounds like you at least have, in one house, let's say you had possibly, and I mean, it could be, five adults, five people, and then another four. And people, you can... No one can guarantee that your... Someone's garage doesn't get filled up with something.
Yes.
And so maybe there's only one spot in there. And then, you know, it's not that... I mean, I like building and new and all that as much as everyone else, but then we have to be concerned about, and that's what our questions are for. We're concerned about the other people that live in the neighborhood. Okay? And I do... I am familiar with your location. And, you know, and another question to the staff, just a thought, you know, if we're looking at, let's say, more housing, how many... Do we encourage in Daly City duplexes? I mean, you know, I mean, literally, instead of like... I mean, you know, I mean, literally, instead of like having a big, where potentially you could have, you know, that many adults in it, you know, actually encouraging, which is what Ray was saying, and not for this project, but, you know, duplex, you know, so you have one on top of the other, like in San Francisco, how you have, you know, two full homes that way.
We, we actually don't have a preference of whether they're stacked or side by side. Side by side, you know, tends to work just better from a parking perspective. One of the things to keep in mind about this lot is that it is larger than 2,500. I believe it's about thirty-five, thirty-six hundred square feet. And that wouldn't provide for two separate lots, just like the previous application. But we're, it, it is getting into the realm of, you know, if they were to build a single-family house on this lot, it, you know, honestly, they'd probably build just as many units with just as many parking spaces. So, you know, it's the sort of thing, you know, whether, you know, I mean, this zone, and whether you, you spoke about, whether we, what we encourage. And, you know, the city a long time ago set up this zoning district so that two units could be built on one lot. So the plan and the general plan for some time has been a more intensive sort of residential development pattern. And not to miss your point about the scale, a lot of the houses in this neighborhood are quite old. There, a lot of them are a hundred-plus years old. And so when we introduce, you know, what a modern building, let's say, you know, next to one-story houses, it does, you know, won't lie to you, it, it doesn't quite fit in visually. But this...
Well, I, I honestly, you know, just to comment through the chair, is architecturally, this is a very nicely designed house from the exterior, I think. So I think they were very considerate in the design to fit the neighborhood. Because I drove around there and I, I could see that even the, the height, I don't, I don't see as an issue. It's more the density of how many possible people and the way that it's structured are suites. I mean, they're, they're called suites in the plan. They're all, you know, bedrooms and bathrooms. And it just looks like, as, as Commissioner Peronio said, something that is going to encourage, if there's nine bedrooms or nine suites, there's going to be at least nine adults living there, likely. Not necessarily, but likely.
So this duplex follows actually a city regulation that we have for single-family houses, for three-story homes. And that is that if you're going to have a, a three-story house, you have to walk, if you come up the stairs from the first unit to the second, in order to access the third floor, you have to walk through the second floor. And what that does is it discourages turning the unit into more units. And again, we've had many conversations over the years with planning commissions, city councils, about how many adults are going to live. And, you know, it's sort of, you know, it, it's kind of a stretch to assume that's going to happen. We don't know that for sure. What we try and work on is the architectural scale. We've added, we, we, we actually did have it and still do have a concern about the mass of this building. We've come up with additional conditions of approval to try and address that and make it fit in more with the less intensive, you know, scale of the neighborhood. But, but the proposal does, does meet all of our regulations.
Commissioner, do you have any questions?
But I'm chairman.
Commissioner Satori?
Let me just make a statement here. Problem of parking and traffic in Daly City is, I would say, very doable, based on my personal evaluation. If only all those people there in that area will open up their garages. If we are going to have an inventory of those garages, mind you, you will be shocked. Most of them are not using their garages. First, they will say the garage is old, they cannot open it anymore. Secondly, they're using it as, as their, uh, some sort of all their garbage, all those things that they put in. So if only, if only those people are complaining about parking, they will open up their garages. I think it's, it will be a very good place to live in because people are not using their garages. That is why most of the time, we complain about parking. Because they want to use their street. And their street is as if they, they own it. Nobody can park in front of them because as if they want, they want that as their domain. But to me, Vista Grande, going back to this, and Miriam, is very near Bart, very near, on top of the hill, you have the muni. It's walkable. I, I don't know the, the owner of this, I don't know him. But based on what I, I can observe truthfully, you know, I always pick up my mind, that's why I said, this is very near Bart. Because in some cities now, I just came from, in, in, in Budapest, you know, people are now using bicycles just to go to the station. I, I've seen a beautiful lady, an executive, heading this, this trolley and maybe scared. So I said, this can be accommodated here also in Daly City. Just go to the bar. And it, there's a lot, a lot of things to, to solve, to solve. It's sol, solid, this one is very solid. It can always solve this problem, parking. It's a matter of trying to change our behavior.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Uh, I would like to ask the gentleman, other man, is, is a part of this applicant, sir? Are you part of the applicant?
Yes.
Yeah, for you to come up and have an opportunity to, for the Commissioners to ask him some questions. And you, please state your name, sir. Are you an engineer?
No, I'm, I'm, my name's Alan Lynn, and I'm the owner of the vacant lot.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, right. See, I went to the place many, many times and I know the area very well. It's a, I own another property at 120 and 122 Los Spanos Avenue, which is about, what, one block away from Bart Station, okay? That building has four stories and the square foot is exactly like this one. And there is no parking issues because the property by itself, this lot, it's only two blocks away from Daly City Bart Station. And a lot of people and my tenants, they'll go to San Francisco to work. So they walk to Bart. And then some of them were students, study at San Francisco State, okay? So I really don't know what is the issue with the parkings in this particular case. And there is another case is that the square footage, it's thirty-five, thirty-six hundred square feet. That's nothing that I can change about this. You know, the, the best is to provide more affordable houses and all this for people that wanted to live in Daly City. Actually, it's good for the economy, isn't it? It's hard to find place to live.
May I?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
And, and this property, it's only one block away, I think one and a half, very short block away from Mission Street.
Yeah.
Okay, so there is transportations on Mission Street.
If someone wants to take a bus, correct, correct, correct.
Yeah, take a bus.
So, so, so let... Excuse me, sir, just let the Commissioners ask their questions.
So, so my question is this, so when, with these, you, you brought up your other homes.
Yes.
You talk about tenants.
Yes.
So, and you talk about students and you talk about people working downtown. It sounds like it's more that, are you, are, is not a family, it's not a, you're not, it doesn't sound like you're renting to a family. Is, are you renting to families? I'm just curious.
Yes.
So it's a one family?
One family, but they have, you know, brothers, sisters nowadays. Nobody can pay high rent. So they will gather together to rent from me. But it's a same family members, like brothers, sisters, and then they all live together in a, in a unit. See, that's, that tells you how difficult it is to live in this area.
Okay, thank you, sir. And any other, Commissioner Edelman?
No.
Commissioner, Commissioner Satori?
You know, I hope you, you ladies and gentlemen have compassion and, and to allow us to do it. Because there are so many people that need housings around here.
I, I just have a couple of questions myself. So this is working right clean. So are you saying that, that you propose your, this property to be a hundred percent affordable housing?
Well, not affordable, but you know, hey, the rent is already cheaper than San Francisco.
Okay, I thank you.
A lot cheaper.
That's fine. But thank you, sir. Appreciate, appreciate your time. Is there any other public comments? Hearing none? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing, please.
So moved.
All in favor, a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. And I'll ask the, my co-chair to do the rest for me since it's a little blurry tonight. Thank you, co-chair.
Recommend that the planning commission forward to the city council the following recommendation. Adopt the findings as outlined herein. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Okay. Recommend that the city council from the environmental, oh, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Oh, voice, okay, voice vote.
I'm sorry, before we take the vote, did, can we make recommendations?
Yeah.
Open for discussion.
I, I really do. I, I would, I would like, I would like it to be revisited on the number of rooms and bathrooms. I would like that to be looked upon.
Are you making a motion?
Yes, I can make a motion.
Do you have a specific number?
Specific, um, shoot, it's just that I'm not sure how to, how that, how this, this part works. I, I really believe, in just my personal opinion, I really, I really believe that, um, and I understand, I've lived here all my life, all my life. And, um, and I understand how hard it is to live here, to live in the Bay Area in general. But what we're looking at is, we're looking at a home. And what I feel that I'm hearing is that this is a, it's, what'd you call it?
Hacker hotel.
It's like a hotel, almost. Even though it's same family, a brother, a sister, a cousin, it, it sounds like, the, women, women, I, I will give my opinion. Right or wrong, I'm giving my opinion.
So your motion is?
And my motion is that, that we revisit how many bedrooms and bathrooms are in this home.
Okay, so noted.
Go ahead.
For a point of clarity, do you mean that we bring it back to the planning commission? Or is the planning commission going to recommend a room count to send to the council?
I think we should recommend a room count when it goes to the council.
So are you making that motion?
I would like to make that motion.
Or, or you could just recommend a reduced room amount? Or do you want to be specific on the specific number?
You know, we, we are just an advisory, correct?
But you can still have a revisit.
I understand. We are just an advisory. And my personal request, however it goes, you guys can disagree, is that if we can't make a recommendation to the planning, bring the number down, that it, we at least can tell, make the recommendation to the council for my concern, I don't know, our concern on how this property is going to be used.
Commissioner, would, if, if I might take a stab at, at making a motion?
A better one, thank you so much, because I have just...
Commissioner Edelman?
So I would like to make a motion that we amend the recommendation that the five-bedroom, five-bath unit, I think one's five-bedroom, five-bath.
And one's four-four.
Reduced, both of them to four-four, to slightly reduce the bedroom count and make it more likely to be what would be considered a family home rather than a, um, a multi-unit hotel.
So is that to redesign the...
Reduce the bedroom count to four, four-four and four-four.
Okay. And then, but the, the current of the, of the way it's structured now is, like you were saying, is structured... Well, it's still, that's okay, but it's still structured.
Five, five and a half.
Even if you reduce it, it's still like a, like a hotel.
It is, but at least, I mean, my house where I live in Daly City is a four-three.
Okay, so, 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 recommendation is, right now, it's five, four and a half and four, four and a half.
Oh, no, I, I'm sorry.
The current, the current one.
The current one, isn't it five-six? But you guys are going to reduce it to five-five?
So we already, we already placed a condition before bringing it before you this evening, the, a condition to, uh, the, the full bathroom on the ground floor, to reduce that to a half-bath.
Very good, okay.
So that was part included in the...
So, so it's five, five and a half, four, four and a half right now. And so what I recommend in the motion is that both units are four and four.
Wait a minute.
Then in that case, we would remove the bathrooms at the lower level.
But do you, although, I mean, some people like to have a bathroom on the...
The applicant, the applicant...
They could modify, but that total room count is all I can make.
Right, right, I agree, I agree. Thank you for doing that, thank you.
So there's a motion on the floor? And the applicant can decide where they would like to place the rooms and the bathrooms.
Thank you.
So it's the, the motion to revisit the number of rooms to, um, four, four bedrooms and four bathrooms?
To give it to the council.
Each unit.
In each, in both units.
Correct, correct.
So we have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I do, I'll second it.
Okay, we need a voice count?
We need a roll call.
We need a roll call for this.
I will do that.
Okay.
Roll call.
Edelman?
Yes.
Das Magwal?
Yes.
Proaño?
Yes.
Satori?
I'm staying.
D. Giovanni?
Yes, but I have a question before the vote thing, hold on. Is that if we recommend that, and then what if we wanted to not make the scale that way even in the neighborhood?
Well, we just voted for, should we go back?
So you just voted for the adopting?
But I want to make sure that because of the scale of even the three, because it doesn't, it's not conducive to the neighborhood. Isn't it three floors?
So that would be a different motion that you would be making to not forward a recommendation?
And then the houses around it are not three floors, correct?
That is correct.
The floors around it are not three stories. However, the zoning ordinance today, if a homeowner lives nearby, proposed a three-story home, a planner who's reviewing it just in a simple plan, plan check process could not deny that.
That could be built as a matter of rights.
There are houses in the neighborhood that are three-story. The one right next door to the east, I think, is a small...
Right, I mean...
So we're really restricted because of the base of the current, current...
The zoning allows, even for single-family homes. It's not only duplexes that can be three stories, it's single-family homes. And that's completely outside of planning commission review. So, you know, you kind of think of what the zoning ordinance allows for everybody as a baseline when we're looking at these. And this is completely compliant with the zoning ordinance and consistent with the lot coverages and building heights that a single-family home could be, yes.
Currently, but that, yeah, something like that can always be changed in the future. Got it. Okay, so, yes. Okay, then go ahead.
Okay, so the...
Four-four. Yes to the motion.
Ready to proceed? So, uh, so we adopt the findings as outlined herein?
We're, we're actually done. We, 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 you completed this item, you recommend to move it forward as amended.
Okay. Recommend that the city council from the environmental assessment and recommend that the city council approve use permit UPR dash zero-six dash one-eight dash one-three-five-two-eight and design review DR dash zero-six dash one-eight, um, dash one-three-five-two-eight, subject to negation, conditions of approval, outlined herein?
And as amended by the commission, thank you.
And as amended.
So moved. Is there a second?
I, I second it. I just write my notes.
Can we have a roll call, please?
I guess we'll do another roll call.
Roll call, please.
Edelman?
Yes.
Das Magwal?
Yes.
Proaño?
Yes.
Satori?
Yes.
D. Giovanni?
Yes. Okay, are there any other public appearances tonight or any other staff communications? Hearing none, acquisitions or vacations?
Your honor, I'll be on vacation for November. November, in December, probably.
Okay, hearing none. Except for our Commissioners Satori is taking a vacation. Hearing none, thank you for everybody for coming this evening. With that, we return the meeting. Thank you very much.